Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Bayonne. I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the City Clerk and the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on November 4th, 2021. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Ms. Medina.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Mr. Galais.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) Just before we get started, I just have a few announcements. First of all, Councilman Lapalooza is not here. I just ask you, his mom is having surgery, and we ask that everyone keep him and his mom and their family in their prayers and thoughts. Second, I would like to just say today's the Marine Corps birthday, so happy birthday to all the Marines and thank you for your service and all you do for us. And tomorrow is Veterans Day, so a day early, we're going to wish all those who served and is currently serving, thank them for their service. We are forever grateful and we are sitting here today because of people like them. So, thank you.
You ready?
That's all you, Madeline.
Oh, one is a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to $95 million aggregate principal amount of the authority's city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds. And it's fixing the next meeting of December 15th. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
No.
You can't abstain, you mean abstain.
Just abstain. How long is this gonna be on?
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
No.
Oh, two is the same thing as a resolution postponing the final passage of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, state of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal of and the interest of not exceeding $95 million in aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds. And it's moving also to December 15th.
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Abstain.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
No.
Oh, three is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, approving a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Wood Mount Bayonne Phase II Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at West 52nd Street, which property is identified as Block 37, Lot 1, as shown on the official tax map of the city. It was introduced and read at the first meeting held September 22nd, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meeting of October 20th, at which time second reading and final passage was postponed to this meeting of November 10th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading, Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Madeline, the NWO Financial hasn't completed their analysis of this yet, so this is gonna be carried.
So you don't wanna do a second reading and then carry it?
That wouldn't hurt.
Sure.
Takes one thing. Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And motion to postpone to the December 15th meeting.
Some more.
And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh, four is an ordinance entitled, bond ordinance, amending and supplementing bond ordinance number oh dash 20 dash 49, finally adopted by the city council on October 21st, 2020, to increase the appropriations therein by $917,214 and to increase the authorization of bonds and notes therein by the $917,214 to finance part of the additional cost thereof, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held October 20th, was posted in Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting November 20th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution, given the ordinance second reading, who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion of second, resolution of second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Nope. Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And second reading is by title, an ordinance entitled, bond ordinance, amending and supplementing bond ordinance number oh dash 20 dash 49, finally adopted by the city council on October 20th, 21st, 2020, to increase the appropriations therein by $917,214 and to increase the authorization of bonds and notes therein, I'm sorry, by $917,214 to finance part of the additional cost thereof. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Are there any speakers online? Okay, no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, I, with me, I'll take a motion to close.
Some more.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance to amend ordinance number oh dash 21 dash 30C consenting to, one, to sale the project at 175 West 7 Urban Renewal LLC, two, 175 W 7 Development Urban Renewal, two, to confirm the assignment of the financial agreement between the city of Bayonne and 175 W 7 Urban Renewal LLC, and three, confirming the amendment to the, I'm sorry, I'm catching a cold, confirming the amendment to the financial agreement to amend the estimated construction schedule for the project, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held October 20th, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting November 10th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Carroll, given the ordinance second reading, Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Lapalooza, no.
Aye.
Mr. Perez, Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, it's amending ordinance number oh 21 dash 33 consenting to the sale of the project at 175 West 7th Street Urban Renewal LLC to 175 West W 7 Development Urban Renewal LLC and confirming the assignment of the financial agreement between the city and said urban renewal LLC and confirming the amendment to the financial agreement to amend the estimated construction schedule for the project. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. If anyone online to speak.
No hands raised on line.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held October 20th, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 10th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution, giving the ordinance second reading, who'd like to move it?
Move it.
And on the resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. We'll take that as a no. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close? And a second?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage. And a second?
Second.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic, which was introduced and passed first reading at the meeting held October 20th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 10th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance second reading, who'd like, reading, who'd like to second?
I'll second.
And on the resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may, motion to close.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Our first speaker is Tammy Hagar.
Hi, good evening. I'm not sure what can be done about this. I have a concern about the streetlights in various parts of the city. They, there are, there are far and few in between and they're very dim. I, I don't look like it, but I do like to walk. Last week I was walking and I tripped over a sidewalk that was raised quite a bit. The area was dark, can't see it. I did re, I had been in touch with, with Mr. Carroll and I sent him video, because I walked that same route on Thursday, so I can ju, so he can get an idea of how dark it is. I'm not sure that, what you guys can do about that.
Well, if you, if there, if there's a light in the area, now, Mr. Carter, our DPW director sitting back there, we had a conversation about this recently, because I had a number of complaints about the darkness, right? It's getting darker earlier and the weather's so nice, so people were staying out there later. And PSENG has put new types of lights in, sometimes that don't illuminate, and the trees are very full, so they're also, the leaves haven't fall off, so they get caught up there, they don't, so we have made requests at times, if they're really dimly lit and not shining, we can reach out with PSENG to change those bulbs, is that correct, Mr. Carter? We change the type of bulbs, because the ones that they put out, really, the ones that have that yellow or that purply hue to them, they really don't make it down to the ground at all, so we have been requesting. So if you have specific pole, I mean, as far as, or just, there's just no light?
It's, it's, it was the whole area, like, walking, because I, when I walk, I, at my, if I'm, you know, if I'm out, I'll walk from 8th Street, 7th, 8th Street Broadway up to my house, I'm at 159 West 8th.
Okay.
And it, it is very dark, the li, the lights are on, people have porch lights on, and it's still very dark.
So, we can re, we can visit that, but I would encourage all residents, if there's lights that are dim, if we're missing poles in between, that's a, you know, not saying it can't be fixed, but that's a request.
Some, some blocks have two, you know, have two, two lights, some have three.
Yeah, PSENG.
And it's, it's light, if you're within five, you know, but maybe within five feet of the, of the, of the light.
Understood, I, I agree with you, but PSENG is responsible, we can make requests for them, but changing the bulbs is something we can do easier, so if there's a pole there that the lights are just really not, there are new, better lights that actually light up the area better.
Right.
So we can certainly, if you send us over, Mr. Carroll has that information, he could share it with Mr. Carter and we can make that request to PSENG, but we should be doing all around the town, actually. And I don't know what the process really is about getting, we can request PSENG to add more light bulbs. You know, it's interesting, a lot of the, what I would like to, with PSENG, with the new 5G towers that they're putting up, they put up a lot of new poles that maybe we could use to put lights on, because we have a lot of those 5G poles, they're really, if you ask me, and I saw in town, but they maybe put to good use also by putting additional lights on them, because we do get that complaint, so that's something we can certainly look into.
Yeah, because, I mean, not only is it, you know, safety for people tripping, but darker areas could lead to more crime.
Absolutely.
So, okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Hagar, I just, I just want to say, first, thank you for coming out tonight, and second, you, you made it very easy for that one light in that video that was flickering, and that's been sent over to DPW, and as I understand it, it's already...
That's been fixed.
There you go.
So.
So we've got a crack team over there that's on it, and it helps when a citizen like yourself gives us all the information possible, makes it go faster.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Steve, your check?
Mr. Andrew is online, let him record.
Okay.
Good evening, esteemed members of the city council, honored guests, and good citizens of Bayonne. This past weekend, we turned back our clocks to accommodate the move to daylight savings time, to local standard time. Tonight, I'd like to turn back the clock once again to accommodate the memory of one of the worst train disasters in the history of the Northeast, which brings me to the following proposal. As the Bayview project at the site of the old AMP continues to move forward, I propose that the 1958 Newark Bay rail accident be memorialized in that area, respecting, respectfully honoring the 48 lives lost in the tragedy, as well as the many organizations and local citizens, both named and unnamed, who acted as heroes in their efforts to provide relief in a catastrophic situation. Let me briefly recap the incident. On September 15th, 1958, shortly after 10 o'clock in the morning, a Central Railroad of New Jersey commuter train plunged off an open Newark Bay drawbridge, killing 48 of its 100 passengers. Although all safety measures function correctly, three warnings to stop were somehow ignored. There is still speculation about why the engineer, who may have suffered, suffered a heart attack, and his crew, did nothing to slow or stop the train as it headed toward the open bridge. Among the dead were George Snuffy Sternwirth, retired second baseman of the New York Yankees, Shrewsbury Mayor John Hawkins, a New York stockbroker who carried with him $250,000 in negotiable bonds, Army courier John McCloskey, carrying top secret communication devices, James Carmel Adams, brother-in-law to author Kurt Vonnegut, who later adopted his brother-in-law's three children, Elton Clark, a director of Allied Chemical and Dye Company, one of the nation's biggest corporations, Howard W. Huntington, a statistician of the New York Times Financial News Department, Andrew Gill, a devoted husband, father, and IRS employee, and perhaps most tragically, Mrs. Vernica Jurglowitz, a 29-year-old mother of three and her infant son Paul. Among the heroes were Edward McCarthy, owner of Elko Marina, who rescued nine survivors in a small boat, Erie employees, especially those at the Elko Marina and Englander mattress factory, first responders from New Jersey and New York, including the Coast Guard, local fire and police departments, doctors, clergy, the Red Cross, civil defense teams, and the Salvation Army, and the many unnamed and unrecognized citizens of Bayonne who unselfishly helped in whatever ways they could. It seems to me, and likely to many others here in Bayonne, that the third worst railroad disaster in the state's history should be palpably commemorated in some way, a monument, a sign, a pier, a garden, something, after 63 years, it's time. Hopefully, from such a tragic event, a positive development will result from the proposal I've put before the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yerchak.
Thank you.
Just for those who are watching, I, there have been discussions with the developer down there already, and he's going to look to do some sort of memorial into it, so, for the public that don't know that, so. And I thank you so much for the research you did and for bringing it all to our attention and giving us a history.
And if you go to Google, you'll see a whole, you know, just put in 1958 train disaster in New Jersey, and a whole bunch of information there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And the speaker online?
Is there somebody else?
Yeah.
Peter Franco, just a second. Good evening, City Council, Peter Franco, 109 West 53rd Street. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just wanted, I had a quick question. I wanted to know if there's any ordinance that's ultimately governing landscapers or, you know, homeowners blowing leaves into the street. You know, a couple of residents have reached out, you know, it's a small issue, but ultimately with heavy rains, you know, expected, you know, when these cash basins are clogged, they're not working effectively and it just adds to the flooding problem. So I, you know, I don't expect this to be a responsibility, really, of sewers and, you know, ultimately the EPW, you know, if there's something on the books that we can kind of hold these, you know, residents, you know, accountable, homeowners accountable, and certainly business, businesses, landscapers, you know, is there anything on the books ultimately for that?
Well, it is, it is illegal to throw stuff in the street, right, Jay? Jay? We're checking right now, but I, I do believe, just by, we'll double check that if there's an actual thing in there to address leaves in particular, but you can't throw stuff in.
We do have regulations that come through.
We do, it is illegal.
Okay. All right. So I said specifically...
That if they're gonna rid themselves of leaves, they gotta be separated, and they've gotta be placed on the days established for designated for collection at pickup sites or composting areas, and they're only supposed to be placing leaves in containers authorized by the city, not supposed to be put in the, at the curbs just to go down the, into the sewers.
Okay, and then also, we can't, we can't put them in regular trash, correct?
That is correct.
Not supposed to do that, no.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you so much. Now, so, you know, I've attended these meetings the last couple of months, obviously, you know, these, you know, council chambers is not really to air personal grievances, it's about city issues and getting informed. For several months, I've listened to a former colleague, you know, come up to the city council meetings and, you know, make allegation after allegation, demanding apologies, and, you know, I, I'm really pretty frustrated with this, you know, and I feel, some of the commentary, you know, I feel like if you're gonna do something good for the city, do, do good for the city. It's never about yourself and it's never about, you know, a photo op or those types of things. You know, in last month, this individual stated that she was in the game for four years, I'm assuming that's food and security issues, and that she was being disrespected. I presume she feels she was disrespected by the council president and the business administrator and the Bayonne Food Bank for attempting to help residents in the middle of a pandemic by giving out food. So, you know, I wonder why this individual seems to think that giving food to people in need is a game? How is it disrespectful to this individual if someone also helps residents? Isn't it better to have more resources ultimately for residents, even if somebody's not the center of attention? What's the real motive? And that's kind of like what's sticking with me here, you know, this individual left our city to go give out food in, you know, in other cities in the county.
Yeah.
Now, I'm glad that our council president, our BA, and everybody else that's involved in the Bayonne Community Food Bank stepped up for Bayonne residents. You know, for months, this individual demanded an apology. For what? Why would anyone owe an apology to this individual? Maybe she should stop making this about herself and her need for attention and focus on the entire point of getting people food, getting ultimately food to the residents.
Peter, I understand your message, but I'm gonna sort of ask you to, you know, you're kind of doing a little bit of what you're complaining about, so, can we just, you know, so can we just, your point is understood, but, you know...
I, I will transition out of respect, council president, I just wanted to get that on the record, because, you know, my time's just as valuable as everyone else's, and I mean, I staffed for four months on it, and I, you know, respect, you know, all of this. I just want to transition now to Mr. Coffee, where is the letter for no conflict of interest for the food bank? I mean, this is something that we've discussed now for, for months, and I, you know, I'd like to know, I mean, this has been at outside council, I guess, for five or six months now. I, you know, if there's, there's no conflict, and we recognize there's no conflict, why is it taking this long to get this letter?
I will inquire about that tomorrow, Peter.
Well, Mr., you know, with all due respect, Jay, I mean, this is something that's, you know, been going on, I mean, we should have answers to this stuff. I understand that you have a lot of pressing matters on your plate and stuff, but, you know, this makes a big difference in whether or not, you know, people can get food.
Again, I will call Mr. Roth tomorrow and find out if there's a written answer to be provided to us.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, afternoon. My school food has been having mold in it, in the beans, and, and the pizza has a bunch of mold, and kids have been eating it, throwing up in the garbages and bathrooms, and I don't know if I should eat it or not.
What school are you in?
PG Room.
Well, I personally would not recommend eating food that has molds or, or stuff in it, but more to the point, I under, I hear you, and that's not acceptable, that is not, that's for the school board, we don't get involved in that, but we certainly will call over to there and address this, because that's unacceptable. Our kids deserve food that's edible, healthy, and fresh, so we will address it with superintendent...
So we will address it with Superintendent Nice because it's ultimately in his control on what's going on there. And I'd like to thank you, young man, for coming up here and bringing it to our attention and standing up for everybody.
Thank you.
You did an amazing job.
Thank you.
I want to put on record also that I came here tonight to thank the city council for listening to everything that we had to say, and we're working in progress going forward. I did not come here to get attention. I don't need a pat on my back. I don't need pictures. I don't need anything. So before you try to talk something about me, ask me first, and you not know he was wrong. But anyway, we sat down, had a couple of meetings. You guys are looking at some sites. I want to know what happened with some of the city sites that you guys looked at to see if it's open or ready or going anyplace for us.
I think she was addressing it to you.
Yeah, so I'm curious about the site for Holy Family. That's the one that I've been looking into, the three buildings that the BEF are, BEOF are currently in. As of now, I understand we have a legal opinion that we can take over one of those sites. I know that's in the future, but I think the overall issue, as we discussed, was that they're not conducive to dispensing, they're more conducive to being a headquarters.
Yes.
So that's where that stands now. As far as other sites, I haven't been briefed by any other party in the meeting to this point, so I can't comment on it right now.
Okay. Also, I want to thank Mr. Coffee for picking up the pallets and trash from our last Bayonne distribution.
Mr. Cotter. Cotter.
Cotter, I'm sorry. I'm bad.
Tommy, we want to make sure you get credit.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir. I am so sorry. Also, we have a pickup on Friday at St. Vincent's parking lot. We should be finished by like seven Friday night. Thank you, sir. Can't even thank yous. Thank you to Samantha. We're working out the issue for the grant money that she has, so we can get turkeys for families and cornish hens for senior citizens because housing oven is so small and they're only a single person, so they can't eat turkey, so we're getting cornish hens. So I'm going to thank her.
Stephanie, can I ask a question about that? How do they sign up for that? Because some people have asked.
They go right on our page and ask, but always we said that we're going to do the back, the back bay.
Back Bay Gardens?
The first back bay.
But they have to sign up before they...
No, the back bay don't have to sign up. We just need to know how many residents are in that building so we can have enough for them. And are we going to do the building downtown? Is that First or Second Street, Ms. Howard? The senior site downtown, are we going to also do that one too, or no?
With the turkeys and cornish hens?
Whatever you're seeking to do in the way of turkeys and cornish hens is exactly what's going to be done. I think ours is going to be coming from the community food bank, which we'll be doing out of our office.
Okay. Thank you very much. What are we going to do, because now it's getting cold, with our homeless population and housing them for colder days and washing, shower, feeding, what emergency plan do we have in space for Bayonne?
Ms. Howard's going to come up as I pause under.
So the city of Bayonne provides some funding source to Garden State Episcopal for pickup and housing, you know, and we, for those residents or those individuals who are considered homeless in Bayonne, and we can make arrangements. You can actually reach out to me, I can reach out to them if there are some that we know of. Typically, they don't reach out. A lot of times, this comes from the police officers who may come across them, recognize that they're not willing to come out of the cold on their own, and they make the arrangements with Garden State Episcopal or through, sometimes I get the phone call, so, but if we do, you know, do that, I can, and also what I can do is get a contact number, and I can put it on our Facebook page and on our website so that we can do that. But Garden State Episcopal is our consultant service to handle our homeless population when it comes to shelter.
Also, we wondered about, we know they're homeless, but some of them like need a shower or have their clothes washed. Is there kind of a system or something like that in place?
Other than what Garden State Episcopal, I don't know of anything here in Bayonne currently like that, but Garden State Episcopal does make those accommodations for them, so...
And you said that they'll get picked up by the police?
Well, if it is a police scenario, but, or sometimes they will reach out on their own. They've, we constantly give information, you know. We do what they call the point in time count in January, so we provide them with a little bit of that information at times, and they have, on their own, in some occasions, reached, reached out to Garden State Episcopal, but in some occasions, it may be as a result of the police officers.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to ask each person on the council, when you became a council member, what was one of your goals? And did you reach that goal? Like, how, what did you want, how did you want to change Bayonne to make it better, brighter, and bigger? Like, what was your...
Oh, you want to ask, I'll go, go ahead. You can go first, okay.
When I came on, one of the issues, I came with a project, and I did complete the project that had to do with the stop signs. It was one of the things that I had thought about as a student. I actually raised it in 1999 or 2002 as a part of a St. Andrews trip to City Hall, why we can't illuminate those things to make traffic safety more of an issue. In the intervening years I've been here, I've moved from that to trying to make traffic safety part of my wheelhouse. So a lady spoke here tonight about streetlights and the fact that they weren't bright and some were flickering and so, so I've, I've attempted, and I think with some success, especially downtown, there's, and all made possible through DPW, through Ms. McNulty and Director Cotter, their cooperation, but there are six new slow children at play signs painted in the streets. There are at least two new stop signs present in the first ward, and there is a new four-way blinking stop light in the first ward in the intervening three years. Does not happen just from my office, happens in the cooperation with everyone up here. But I, without, I don't know how to not get in trouble by answering this question. I feel like I've succeeded in that. You asked, did we feel like we...
After everybody say, I'll tell you why I did it. Go ahead.
So I do feel like that was somewhat of a success, but it's never done, so I want to continue.
Okay. Anybody else?
Reason I got involved is, I'm actually retired, and what I looked at is that Bayonne was slowly dying. There was nothing around, especially when my daughter said, Daddy, I can't stay in Bayonne, there's nothing for me here. She moved out. And there was nothing being built, everything was stagnated, Bayonne was dying, and the taxes just kept going up. So that's when I got involved in the community, and I feel for the senior citizens. I'm a senior citizen, even though I'm 39. But, you know, and the kids, and one of the things that the kids, the kids should have parks for them and enjoy recreation. And as a grandfather, 39-year-old grandfather of five kids, I realized that, you know, we have to get involved, the community, and we have been involved as a complete group, as council group. We have been involved trying to make Bayonne a better town and having more items for it and trying to adjust these taxes, hopefully that after all these buildings will be filled up, we have good ratables coming in. Hopefully, $10 million a year will be collected, and our tax ratables will increase and will be reasonable. But there's a lot that we still have to do, and it's for the overall benefit of the community. That's why I got involved. I'm not interested in anything else, and that's about it.
Well, I got in just to help the residents of Bayonne also, and see, you know, like the lady got up and said about lights. I did that when I first got on. It was dark. Mr. Cotter unfortunately wasn't here at the time, it was Gary Shimaluski, but again, I went through DPW. They called PSENG, they got the lights. The residents were happy on that block, cleaning streets, trimming trees, making sure everything was starting to look good, you know? So I'm happy.
I just want to go back to the lights for one second. I already got an email from the PSENG. He's also, our outreach person is also a Bayonne resident, and he asked me to send him the information on the area, so he will get cracking on that, okay? I got involved for a number of reasons, and the number one reason is to make Bayonne a better place. I have always been involved in Bayonne, born, raised, lived here all my life, and whatever people's needs are, that's what we looked at, you know, we came on, we knew Bayonne was, we needed to revive it a little, put some life back into it, some of the development, fix the parks, make it a place, a destination where people want to come, where, like Mr. Perez says, your kids don't always want to go to the park in another town, they want to stay here. It's about making Bayonne back to community. I felt that at that time, we had lost a little bit of the community feel of Bayonne. People were staying in. I think we did a good job of that in first, you know, four years we were out there. We did a lot of social events. People felt more community and basically addressing people's needs and letting them know that they're heard. You know, I answer every email, return every phone call, and try and help people resolve whatever issues they have.
And that's why I said I came here to say thank you, because I don't do city council meetings because I work at night, but I started because I wanted a situation fixed. Didn't want the limelight, didn't want a pat on my back, just like he wanted them to apologize to you because he felt they did something wrong to you. We was in the same boat. But I wanted you guys to name something good so the residents and the people online can see that you guys are doing good, you do listen to the residents. That's why I wanted to come and say thank you. So the other stuff that's going on, I had nothing to do with that. So don't address me or nothing, and I hope you never does again. My other thing is, I want to know how can we make the leadership in Bayonne look like our population in Bayonne?
Run for office, honestly. We try to be diverse in what we put people on our boards. I make a conscious effort to go out and, you know, get people of all different nationalities, sexualities, creeds, whatever your, it, we try, we do do a good job of trying to do that, you know, make sure they're well-balanced. You know, we have added a lot to our, you know, we have our first Egyptian or Muslim cop firefighter that came on. We have done these things, we are, we, you know, a lot of those are silver service, and we go out and recruit and, you know, try and go into those areas and encourage people. We offer, they offer classes specifically for testing for those people in communities that are underrepresented. I think we have diversified City Hall more than it ever has been. You know, we have a lot of African Americans working in City Hall more than was there. Is there quite enough? Probably not. We have a lot more Spanish people now. We have Egyptian people working here, you know. We are trying, we understand, you know, we encourage people to run, you know, the Board of Ed last time, you know, you know, Doc Watson ran, you know, I kind of encouraged him to run, I, you know, I walked with him, I thought it was important, you know, that we have that balance. So that's what we do, we do what we can, you know, but it's about people really wanting to get involved, and I think a part of that is allowing people to feel safe to get involved, that they're not going to be, you know, attacked or some way publicly for wanting to have their say. And I think we do a good job of letting people come in here, talk, and encourage them to, you know, say what they feel and, you know, and not feel like there will be any repercussions for that.
Okay. Two more things. I understand the building's going up, cool, nice, pretty, but what are we going to do about our kids? Like he said, people are leaving the town because there's nothing for our kids to do. Peter...
Tommy?
No. Peter...
Oh, maybe, oh, yeah.
Emilio, he does a great job with rec, but for the kids that can't go to rec because their parents are working or doing something, what, like, we don't have a movie theater anymore. The skating rink is being closed. Like, what other thing could we attract these companies that's wanting to build in our town? How can they help us build stuff for our community, even for the seniors?
We try. You know, unfortunately, it's, I don't want to say it's not in our control, but we have to, you know, the businesses want, they're not only going to come here if they feel they can be successful and profitable. And part of the development allows that, right? A lot of these companies, the first thing they do when someone wants to franchise or open something else, they check the median income in the area. And they say, you know, for years, and my daughter's a big proponent, she wants Panera Bread here, she's been asking for it, they used to take the train to Hoboken to go, but we don't meet the, and our median income wasn't high enough for them to consider it. The new apartments do raise that income, so some maybe more places. I mean, we opened a few of those, Joyful Zone does a fabulous job of community kids activities, but a lot of that depends on the weather being out there. You know, we talked about for, you know, we should be able to use the, I think now we have a better relationship with the Board of Education and do a little, use the schools for a little bit more activities, which allows Pete to do that, but, you know, about attracting private things, you know, to come into town like a banchu or a theater. There is, I don't want to promise anything, the theater model has changed. It's a new kind of thing. That building didn't really conform to the new, the way theaters work now, they're two floors, they're an experience, they're a restaurant to eat. So we are trying to attract that. There are plans, one of the developers is trying to get somebody to come in and run one of them. It would be in a new building, though, that would be designed. Frank's Theater just wasn't laid out for the new, the way, the way the theater business is now. So, you know, we would like nothing more than that, you know, we try to attract them.
So information like that, I think if you guys like either put on your website or put it on something, because people don't know that. People don't know that you guys are trying, but we're just not meeting that level, right?
Understood, yes, yeah. You're, you know, and it's about getting them, and, you know, I know some of the new things are trying to get some pizza parlors or restaurants to come in, and with COVID, people are a little timid, too. They want to see how it's going to, you know, balance, and a lot of, unfortunately, with those rec-type of things, like the gym we were supposed to have, and I know this is not what you're talking about, but it's just an example, LA Fitness was supposed to be built, they already have the foundation behind the Starbucks, but when COVID hit, those close contact kind of businesses, you know, they're a little unsure, even like, like those, the kids, like a Chuck E. Cheese or something like that, where kids are close together, there's, they're really not looking to expand right now, they're trying to re-prove and exist where they are because of the COVID and getting back to regular full capacity where they can be profitable. But, you know, certainly, we welcome them, and we would sit down and try to, you know, help anybody find a location for something like that.
Okay, one more, one more thing. Once COVID, it's not going to probably go away, but who can we get in contact with if we want to have different workshops, but like domestic violence?
Oh, you can do that now. You can, you can contact, you know, well, so it depends where, so, which reminds me, I was supposed to say we were doing about rental assistance, I mentioned last meeting about potentially doing, the director from the state about doing a program at the library. So a lot of that, the library in Bayonne, if you all haven't been there, you should go there, it's just a beautiful building, and it is getting a facelift and getting some work done, but programs could be done there. If you come to us, we can certainly work with you on doing them. You can always use the council chambers, but sometimes for things like that, you need more privacy, separate rooms. The library is a great resource for that, you know, you can always use the museum. We can certainly work with you on getting those types of public service. I mean, we all agree Reverend Patterson's here, and she does a lot of the public outreach. She's been doing the mental health things down at the park throughout once a month to bring awareness to mental health issues and stuff like that, you know. Domestic violence would be another great one because it does exist, and it does exist in Bayonne. So we're open. You have an idea, you know, group, we'll find you a place and we'll promote it and help you get it done.
Okay. Like I said, I came here to say thank you. I'm glad we're moving forward, and I appreciate every person, director, council here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
This is out of order.
Anytime.
I apologize. I'm Samantha Howard from the BEOF, and I think this is an appropriate time to follow Ms. Glover when we talk about food, food insecurities and things such as that. I am a member of the Hudson County Task Force as a representative of Bayonne and Southern Hudson County, and one of the things, and if you all want to follow me on this with your cell phones, that has been established and recently rela- on this with your cell phones, that has been established and recently released, is a number to actually locate food in your area. If you would text the words "find food" to the number 908-224-7776, and you put in "find food," and it'll give you a little prompt, and then you put in your area code, and it will pull up all the food locations that you can find food in Hudson County. Ms. Glover Wilson, when you do get an established address, your address would definitely be a benefit to that, and we look forward to adding you to that. But if you do that, and also in Spanish speaking, same number, comida, and your area code, and it will pull up all of the food locations that you can get food pantry within, within the city of Bayonne or as close to you, within two miles. So I just wanted to add that, and that has recently been released as a new effort through the Hudson County Food Insecurities Task Force.
And just to follow up on that, I also have been in touch with the county food insecurity group, and they're looking to register, and I'm working with them on our registered food pantries that...
Yes.
To bring the other ones in, to get moved from the, from the food bank, from the...
From New Jersey Food Bank, Community Food Bank.
They don't, a lot of the, like St. Andrews, a lot of the Catholic churches.
Yes.
I know Reverend Patterson's church does, actually, their food pantry is registered, but to get them registered and reach out to them, because they want to get away from doing the outdoor stuff, and they want to have, you know, places where people can actually go inside and like pick out what they want. So we are working with them to try and get them registered so they can get that. So those more, we'll hopefully be bringing more people, more places online that will come up in there, that'll be registered with them.
Absolutely. There are a lot of wonderful things on the horizon with the community food, I'm sorry, the Hudson County Task Force.
Yes.
And this is the first one that's been released to the public, so you all, you know, if you need this number, let me know. Several of you all have my text number, but I can share it with you, it's a wonderful resource.
Yeah, and we'll put this up on the city website, we'll get that up there.
Perfect.
On the city website, and so that people can find that number if they need it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other hands raised online? Okay, last one I have here is Haman. Or Hannah?
Hannah.
Hannah, looks like an M.
Good night, everyone. Actually, I live next to Mr. Gules, my best neighbor. I have a terrible problem with the garbage company. My garbage is being missed every single week to recycle, I guess because I'm a corner house, they don't observe me or I'm invisible, you know, but my garbage is being missed. If I schedule something, they don't show up, I don't know what's going on.
What's the address?
Nine West 29th.
Can I just ask one question? So you're on the corner?
Yes.
Do you have the garbage on 29th?
She's next to a big building.
I'm next to the big building, probably that's why I'm being missed.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Carter's here, and he's hearing this, so he'll follow up and make sure, nine West 29th, okay? And Jackie, his wonderful secretary who keeps, who actually does all the work, we don't want to say that, but he'll make sure he reminds Tommy, you know, she's his memory, she'll remind him that, to take care of that, but we'll address that, there's no reason for that.
I call every single week, they probably know me by my name by now, because I call them every single week. But another thing is, I would like to thank everyone for helping and working with Stephanie to improve and help the city of Bayonne. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to congratulate you on raising a fine young man there who came up and spoke.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, eight is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 021-32, entitled an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, to adopt the official street name for a new roadway located in the Bayonne Maritime District of the Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December 15, and a Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers has a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
May I comment on that?
It's up for introduction.
It's on for introduction, so public hearing is on at next month's meeting, okay?
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan entitled for cash chem redevelopment, plan for the property identified as Block 360, Lot 1, Block 332, Lot 2, 2.01, 4, and 5, Block 361, Lot 12, Block 362, Lot 3, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December 15, and a Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers has a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
I just want to add that, I just want to go on the record of saying, we received a request to make amendments to this from the property owner who's actually here in the audience, so that's the decision, if we're going to introduce it regular or with the amendments, do we need that now, Madeline, or just wait till next week?
Just wait till next week.
Okay, I just want a clarification.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll move it.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
For your public hearing. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, 10 is an ordinance amending and supplementing to be advised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7 traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, December 15, at 7:00 PM, in the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers has a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This is to fix the, delete one day of street cleaning from, on the east side of Avenue C, from First Street to 7th. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr., nope, Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Communications is a resolution ordering, moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C3. Are there any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Officers' reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolution incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR3. Any questions on the officers' reports?
Yes.
Mr. Mars, come on up.
Good evening, Mike Mars, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne. I'd like to know who the four bidders are for this particular project, and I'd also, I also have another question on this project. What is the status of the proposed sales for the BEOF buildings? Where are we at with that in order to finance some of this, these costs?
I don't believe there's anything done on that, because we don't have a date which will be leaving them, so there has been nothing, I mean, that is the intention, that was part of the agreement when we did it, but we're, we are not, we haven't gone down that avenue yet, because there is no tentative end move date, even when the building's done, how they're going to move, what they're going to move, and when. So it would be premature. And as far as the bidders, our CFO, Donna Maurer, just went to get them from, get them for you, she didn't have them with her, okay?
Okay.
So, Madeline, you want to move on, and we'll come back to this one, when Donna comes back? She has to go back to her office, so.
That's fine, I can come back, thank you.
All right. So the officers' reports will be from OR1, 2, taking OR2 out, so it's OR1 and OR3. And on those two officers' reports, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
We'll come back to that one.
We're going to come back to that one, okay. Going forward, the consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following communication, resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR1 through CR4 with the removal of CR10 and CR12. Any questions on the consent resolutions? Any hands raised online? On the consent resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye. We do have the four bidders here, if you, I mean, Donna, run back, but we do have it, so if you want me to, we'll provide it to Mr. Morris, and then we can vote on that, Madeline.
Sure.
Billy Contractor and Restoration from Dafford Avenue in Patterson, New Jersey, Alexandra the Great Incorporated, that's from Fairfield, Alana Construction Corp., that's from Secaucus, and H&amp;H Construction and Mechanical from Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Donna.
On OR2, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 1 is approving Chapter 159, Number 3, in the calendar year 2021 budget, seeking permission of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of items of revenue.
Move it.
Second.
And on OR1, is Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 2 is approving budgetary transfer number 1 in the calendar 2021 budget, which has to be read in full, and it is resolved that the budgetary transfers, as set forth below pertaining to the calendar year 2021 appropriations, be in the same or hereby authorized, and be further resolved that the comptroller be in, and is hereby authorized and directed to make said transfers in the accordance herewith. It's from the fire department, other expenses forty-five thousand, from parking and playgrounds, other expenses thirty-five thousand, to the police uniform, other expenses seventy thousand, from the business administration, other expenses twenty-five thousand, from the primary general elections account, thirty thousand, to office services in the amount of fifty-five thousand, from the swimming pool, other expenses forty thousand, to the swimming pool, salary and wages forty thousand, and under the parking authority, from the parking utility, other expenses, other insurance, twelve thousand dollars, to the parking utility, medical insurance, twelve thousand dollars. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 3 is the discussion of the city's best practices survey. That was just the questionnaire.
Who's talking with that?
Somebody's got an active phone.
Guess it's not that exciting.
With the, our 3, the best practices survey.
Does anyone have any comment on it?
The onus is upon you to have a discussion about it, that you've, you've looked at it, you've understood it, if you do have any questions, ask questions, but just a short discussion has to be had at the council meeting about the best service, best practices survey. So I would ask everyone to confirm that they had the opportunity to review, review it, and that they don't have any concerns with it, or do have concerns with it.
Anything?
No.
But?
I filled it out.
She filled it out. I have nothing at this time.
Nothing.
I'm perfectly fine.
Okay. So on the resolution that you had this discussion, who'd like to move it?
I'm second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 4 is amending resolution number 20-02-19045 to correct the Scrivener's error and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with EOM 990 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC, which was incorrectly designated as EOM 9-102 Avenue E Urban Renewal LLC, and is for the property located at 190-102 Avenue A. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 5 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Archer Greiner, PC, for professional legal services as bond counsel for the period commencing January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2022, and is chargeable to bond ordinances and various accounts. It is a public, professional service contract, so will be advertised. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
At 6 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation for the administration of the city's community development block grant program for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2022.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Triad Advisory Services for the community development block grant, as the community development block grant consultant for the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand six hundred dollars for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2022.
Move, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 8 is being withdrawn. Our 9 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for the services as the environmental consultant for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2021, 2022, for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Gules?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our 10 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with NW Financial Group LLC for financial, professional services as the financial advisor for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2022.
Move it, but it says sixty on ours.
It said sixty thousand on that.
It's seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Those were the first numbers I got.
Oh, okay, so we increased it.
Who'd like the second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Sure.
Sure.
Mike Mars, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne. I'd like to know who NW Financial Group LLC is, where are they based out of?
Hoboken.
Hoboken? Are there any names attached to this LLC?
Dennis N. Wright, Mike Hanley, they're a professional financial analysis firm. The city's utilized their services for well over two decades, I would think. They've been here for the most part since, I think since the late 90s or mid 90s, in one iteration or another. Essentially, what their job is to do is, and they're, they're taking on a new role, in fact, that they're, they're looking at our financial agreements before they get introduced to the council, and makes, doing an independent analysis of the financial agreements, the pilots that are being submitted to the city. They also can analyze things and sometimes with respect to the best practices, they want to have a third party looking at financial documents to ensure that the information that's provided by third parties is... that's provided by third parties is vetted by an independent third party, a third-party contractor. So they've been with us for, I would think, since the Dory administration. Dennis N. Wright's name is in my head since the ninety-five, ninety-eight, maybe?
Or bond and note sales as well.
Yeah. They participate in that also.
Okay. Well, just a suggestion. I mean, month after month, I see these companies listed on the agenda, and it would, it would make it a lot easier to know where they're based at of, you know, just a suggestion. You know, that's why I'm here asking the questions. Where are they from? And who are they? You know, who are their principals in the company?
I don't know if we're going to drill down that far, but I think.
No. You know, I'm not asking for that. Just suggestion, they're from Hoboken. You know, and it gives me a better idea of who they are to research them and to be more accurate if, when I do research them and check it to their background.
Well, I agree with you. I think at least, at least when we're awarding contracts, we should have that information in there, maybe not on every single, you know, thing throughout the year. But when we initially enter into an agreement, we could do a better, I mean, it's in the full ordinance, I'm sure. We just don't do it in the, in the resolution. It's just not in the little blur. But if you got the full one, it'll give you all that information.
That's fair enough. Thank you.
We could do a better job of putting it in there for the awarding of it.
Well, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
More work for you, Madeline.
No. If I get them on time, I'll put whatever anybody wants in the little blur.
These are our blurbs. They're done at the time of the, the.
Before we know who it is.
Caucus, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And on the resolution, R ten, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R eleven is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Millennium Strategies from Morristown, New Jersey, for grant writer, to act as grant writer and management consultant for the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars payable in a twelve equal monthly installments for a period commencing January first through December thirty-first.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R twelve is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with CME Engineering for professional engineering services to act as the in-house engineer for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a period of one year commencing January first.
No, no.
I think it's, I think it's one million. Kept on increasing last year, and so I think the.
What for CME?
Idea is not to keep going over. So we've got it for, if I remember wrong, Donna, it's one million, correct?
That's correct.
It's not on ours at all.
It's not in this resolution, so it needs to be fixed.
So CME is one million?
One million.
So it's one million.
Not for an amount not to exceed one million dollars. Okay.
And just for the general public, ninety percent of their, almost all their, comes out of not taxpayers' money, escrows from the projects.
And who'd like to move that resolution?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R thirteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Rutter and Roth LLC for professional legal services in connection with arbitration hearings, litigations before the court, negotiations, and perk hearings involved, involving various unions and the city of Bayonne connected with labor-related matters for a contract amount of sixty thousand, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R fourteen has been withdrawn. R fifteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Matrix New World Consultants for licensed site remediation for an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R sixteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Chason, Lamparillo, Melon, and Capuzo for professional legal services as a municipal tax attorney for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for the period commencing January one, twenty-twenty-two.
Move it.
Any second? And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R seventeen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Chason, Lamparillo, Melon, and Capuzo, Durkin and Durkin, and McManaman Scotland and Bauman as panel counsel for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R eighteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Clark Kaiten Hints for professional planning services as counsel on affordable housing consultant for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-two, for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R nineteen is authorizing an agreement with Richard and Campisano for professional legal services as the Planning Board Attorney for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred dollars, and in the event of litigation, said amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Someone? Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Madeline, you want a cough drop or a lifesaver?
Then I can't read, because then it's going to fly out of my mouth. Don't be okay.
Almost done.
R twenty is in agreement with Richard and Campisano for professional legal services as the zoning board attorney for a period of one year for a total contract amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
R twenty-one has been withdrawn. R twenty-two is withdrawn. R twenty-three is withdrawn. R twenty-four has been withdrawn. R twenty-five is in agreement with. CME Associates for professional engineer, engineering services to act as in-house engineer in connection with developers and redevelopments, developers for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, but we did a CME earlier.
This is for the developer.
For redevelopers and developers. That's what we have. And you know what? If you didn't see it, then pull that one.
Because CME was one million, right?
No, no, but that was.
That's the engineer.
In-house engineering services.
Oh, it's just for, for professional.
Yeah. Let's pull twenty-five, just in case.
Twelve says in-house. Twelve says. And then this one says.
We say pink special.
To act as special, oh, special projects.
All right. Let's pull that one, just in case.
R twenty-six has been removed. R twenty-seven is awarding the contract for the alterations to the former Holy Family Academy, which is now going to be the Bay, Bayonne Economic Opportunity Building, to Billy Construction and Restoration Inc. for the bid price of two million one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.